And now to our main item.
So just a quick update, I have something from John, it says, thank you for the message note. My town email is down. I did send him the number, so I think what it means is he's going to be joining us pretty soon. But go ahead.
Then he'll call in. Okay, we can wait. Because I believe that's the only item on our agenda. For today, we don't have any minutes.
That's the only thing, right? Hopefully this.
Right. Hi, John.
Hi there, how are you?
Good. So I opened.
I lost my email setup and but.
No worries. So I opened the meeting, I read the announcement. And we are ready for discussion on lowering the quorum requirements for town meeting.
Okay, and question, I don't see Kevin here right now, but I wanted to check with you. I don't know whether you're aware that we have decided to. We have decided to eliminate the last item on the. Agenda, which is the discussion of the. Labor contracts. Our main goal, our main focus is to get from here through town meetings successfully tomorrow. And I just made the decision, rather than try and keep too many balls in the air. And I know Kevin's been trying to. Talk with all different kinds of people for final things. Long story short, we're going to deal with the labor contracts next week. We can focus on them then. So that piece of the agenda will not be addressed. That will be postponed till next week and Debbie will set something up.
Yeah, Debbie sent out notice to us asking us if Tuesday was good.
Good, great, well, then you've already got the information. I just got back, so that was why I'm a little late. But anyway, here we are, ready to go. And the question is about the quorum. And I guess where's the first place to start? With you, Stephen, or you, Kevin?
Well, I can maybe just frame it and maybe Mr. Moderator, if you want to jump in and point or. We've had a number of conversations last week, earlier in the week, I should say, it was Monday. We'd had the conversation around the new legislation that the state provided towns. The ability to reduce their quorum for town meeting. It allows us to reduce it for all the articles that we take up if we choose to do so. As I've mentioned before, there was a conversation about it being purely for. As the law was working its way through the House and the Senate, there was a conversation if it would be limited to just the budget. But the final law that was signed by the governor does not have that limitation to it. So. In accordance with the new law, though, we had to set up a. A meeting in a certain number of days out from initial notification from the public, which was seven days. This is our seventh day. From when it was posted that this would be a sub conversation that would be taken up today. So. At this point, it's. Board of Selectmen to decide if it's appropriate to reduce the forum number from 100 to a percentage. No less than 10%, which would mean 10, or a number somewhere between that. So a number between 11 and 90.
Kevin, I'd like to also just clarify something that I was confused about until yesterday. You talk about the number 10% being 10. It's up to, you can go down to 10% of your existing quorum, which because we have an existing quorum of 100. Means 10% means we could lower it as much as down to 10. Somebody had a town had a quorum of 150, then they'd be talking 15, but for us it's 10. Just to kind of, because you've collected some important information on this, would you? Lauren is not here, I don't know if she's joining us or not.
I don't believe she is, is going to be on the phone call today, but if.
Okay.
If I could probably call her while we're on the line.
I think it's pretty straightforward, John. I'm not sure that we need additional help. The question that we only, that we had was whether we could move the meeting. And I think we got that from Lauren, that we're, what we're doing now is totally with it. Because amongst other things, Debbie did listen to, did open the meeting at 10 o'clock so that she could. Direct anyone who had old information to the fact that we're at 2 o'clock. So I think the meeting is all legal and the.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the.
We're, we're pretty straightforward in the law. If we could start the discussion.
Yeah, the reason I was asking about Lauren is because Lauren had made a suggestion in conversation to Kevin. And I thought if she was on, she could share it herself. But Kevin, would you share her thinking just so that we have that as input at the beginning? Because I know we kind of talked about 100, 10, and Lauren had a rationale for a number in between those. I wonder if you'd share her thinking.
Yes, so I'll try to do it justice and explain it as well as she did. But the typical forum's 100 people. And if we reduce it down to 51. In the event that there is an item that's taken up, if you had unanimous vote for it, you have 51. You have a majority of the quorum anyway. So. From, I guess, I wanted to say.
It's an optics question.
Yeah, it's, it is to a certain degree to show that there's.
It's only optics.
Yeah, there's.
It's only optics.
I agree, I agree.
That's sort of the, as I've thought through this. That's really the downfall. This is a good thing in the sense that it, from a nuts and bolts or mechanically speaking, it gives us the cover. Because there's a lot of preparation that goes into town meeting. It's right up against the end of the fiscal year. We want to see this be successful, be able to cover as much as we can and hopefully the entirety of it. But the optics of reducing the quorum are just that, that people might see it and. We just need to be prepared that there's some optics around reducing the quorum.
So what I would like to do is. Move that we reduce the quorum for the 2020 annual town meeting in 2020. Yes.
Go ahead, if you want to make the motion, go ahead, go ahead.
We'll make the motion, then I will. We can amend the, even the number if we want to, but I just want to get something on the table. That we reduce the quorum for the 2020 annual town meeting and 2020 special town meeting from 100 to 51. And. I'm open to a second and I'm open to amendments if people feel the number should be different, but. No second on that.
I have amendment, I have a motion to offer if there's no second.
There's no second Lynn, no second Boyd, no second Dick.
I'll second it.
Okay, Dick, I'm happy to listen to, I mean, we are happy to listen. If you have a suggestion on a different amount for a different rationale, I will be happy to amend the motion.
Yeah. I think we want to put a little bit more data into the motion, so it's a little bit more legal. But from the point of view of what we are going to do. If we reduce the quorum. My sense is that if we reduce the quorum. We should stay with what was a lot, most discussed by the state legislature. But they left it up to the town, which I give them credit for. But most of the discussion with the state was if it went down, it would be for financial, financial articles only. Or financial matters only. And related to federal, if there were some federal law things that had to be done. My suggestion is that you can call on optics whatever you want. I believe that if we reduce it, it should be reduced only for those items which are fiscal. Now, I really believe we're going to get a good quorum. It's almost an exciting thing to have an outside town meeting. It's different and I think we're, there's a lot of people who will not come that would normally come. But there's a lot of people I think that will come. The last time we had a meeting, the last year, we had over 600 people. So I think we're going to come up with 100 without a problem. But this is all about, in my mind, being careful and have an insurance policy should we not get 100. And in that, what I'm going to suggest is hopefully a rare potential. That should be, the meeting should be limited only to that of the financial items.
That seems to complicate things in that if you have a quorum of 51, you start, suddenly you get to a financial item and you don't have a quorum. The whole meeting grinds to a halt while you try to figure out if you're going to be able to get a quorum. And then you go back and it's going to go back and forth between financial items. So I personally would not be in favor of limiting. Since the state gives us permission to do it for the entire meeting, I think for simplicity and clarity. We should make it one quorum which covers all the articles in the 2021 warrant. Steve, I don't know if you have a opinion on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. If in fact we take the financial articles first, then there's not a back and forth, so to speak. There is either 100 and we don't, we can keep going. Until we drop, if something happens and people drop out, we would normally end the meeting. But then we drop down to something that's, that's less than 100, we would stop the meeting unless we are doing just financial items. I do, I do not agree that it's going to be an on and off, on and off. It'll be very clear what actions we take based on the number of people there and what we're dealing with at the time.
Mr. Moderator, your thoughts, please.
There's a, there's a couple of issues that come up, Dick. If you switch the articles around and from where they are printed. In other words, we're dealing only with financial items. Does that include financial items of all kinds, spending of all kind? Or is that just the budget items?
My motion would have been to do all articles under the STM. And do articles second through 11th, although maybe 12th, under ATM. Or somebody may want to reduce it only to as far as the Essex. Technical school. But my, my motion was going to be from second to 11th.
Okay, so, so that, you're absolutely correct that there's not going to be any back and forth. Because all of those articles would come in the very beginning of the town meeting. So that, that, I, I don't have any problems with it. I'm not sure. I guess our goal is to complete the entire warrant if we can, right?
If we have, in my mind, if we have a full forum, as the town bylaw says, that would be my take. We want to make it through everything, but only if we have 100 or more.
Okay, okay.
And I feel confident that we're going to get 100, but this is an insurance policy.
Okay, so what you're saying, if I am clear, I'm just trying to understand. What you're saying is you're proposing to reduce the quorum. To a number, you haven't, whether it's 51 or whether it's 10 doesn't matter. But you're reducing the quorum to handle all. Budgetary financial items. And so it could appear at the very beginning, what, so. What, we, we would not then vote on any other articles other than the budget items, right?
Correct. No capital items except, no, no real cap, no real capital items except in the STM, you have to deal with them because they're part of. They will go away on June 30th.
Okay, but more than likely, the STM is going to come before we finish everything anyway. Before we get to Article 12, the STM will come before that. So, okay. It's fine with me, but that means all other articles will be handled at a special town meeting to be determined later.
Correct.
That's an expense. I'd rather see us just stay at 100 and vote down or allow me to withdraw the motion. If the feeling is we really should give the town a chance to have its 100 people present, let's just do that. There seems to be a general confidence we're going to get 100. It's not like we have a quorum of 200 or 150, which might be more challenging. But I prefer not to split it and I certainly, for asking people to come out like this, prefer not to have an abbreviated town meeting in any way. That's my personal take. Lynn, do you have a thought?
I would rather keep it at 100 and get everything done. I would rather make a push to get everybody to come out. Because otherwise, we just have to go through this again and make a push to get everybody to come out. I think everybody knows about the meeting. And I think we have plans later of getting people as we do at, you know, the scheduled meeting. So I would keep it at 100 and, and push to get that number.
Mr. Jackson, what's your thought?
Well, I, I didn't see any downside to reducing the quorum number. So I have pretty much always said that we should do that. I felt that we should do that. And we may not need to, we may not need to invoke that kind of thing. Because we may have, we may have, as everybody thinks, we may have more than, than you would guess. But I'd like to have that insurance policy because I'd like to make sure that we get it done if there aren't 100 people there.
Right, and that, that invocation is today's vote. It's nothing that we invoke or don't invoke at the meetings.
Well, I, I understand, but.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you.
Just let me add something to this. You have passed, already passed a motion for the 112th budget if we don't get it done at town meeting, okay? So what you're, what you're debating right now is would you rather have the actual budget passed? Or would you rather go into this 112th budget if you don't have a quorum? So that's what you're weighing, you're weighing those two options. Because if you don't have a quorum, you certainly could, by reducing the quorum, you certainly could pass the budget articles. But again, I think at least you would have residents' input. If you have a reduced quorum, you will have some people there. There's no question, I know there are going to be some people then. So you will have input and you could pass a budget based on the people that are there. And, you know, that would be better to me than forcing a 112th budget. Agreed.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of letting this thing go on and enforcing the 112th budget. I think that gets really messy. I don't, I don't really, if there's something sacred about the number 51, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that number. But I think.
That 51 was a number explained by Lauren Goldberg yesterday in the town meeting at Walpole. They reduced it because they have 100 member quorum and they reduced it to 51. With the rationale that that is the majority that needs to be passed. For any article to pass, 51 people would have to be in favor of it. And, and that's fine with me because, you know, if, if you feel like the optics are important. Then reduce it to 51% and, and at least we'll, I don't even think we're going to need it, but at least we have it as a backup.
Well, that would be my thought, make it 51 and let's get on with it. But we, we, we've got to finish it, in my opinion, on Saturday. And, and I'm not in favor of going to a 112th budget process because that's going to really get messy, I think.
Mr. Gant, your thoughts on hearing this?
Well, I, I, I would go with 100 if that's what, if that's what everybody wants, that's fine with me. Make no changes, so to speak. I do think it would be extremely embarrassing if we had the meeting, if we go with 100 and then we have the meeting and we come up with 70 people. But if that were the case, and then we finally say, okay, everybody go home, nothing happened, nothing here, nothing here to see. And yes, we will do a 112th budget and we'll have another meeting as soon as we can so we can get out of the 112th budget. I think that that would be extremely embarrassing for the Board of Selectmen to have made that decision. But I'll go along with 100. What I'm proposing is simply to say, go with under 100. And if you have to have it, then limit the things you do to only financial things. It's the best of both worlds. I think it's a very, very simple decision to make.
Well, what do you, what's the cost of having a special, special town meeting in the future?
$1,000, next.
I mean, it's, it's mostly manpower and manpower, to be honest with you. I mean, there's going to be hard costs associated with it as well. But it's, 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 it's a lot of work, as I've observed for the first time in this process, to, to prepare it. So I, I've been very encouraged that, hey Beth, I think Beth could probably answer this question better than I could. But the, I've, I've always been very proud of and encouraged, we talked with other town administrators, just how much consistency we've had as, as, as leadership. In the direction we've gone with town meeting and the desire to try to do everything. Because if we're able to accomplish that, like Essex was able to do that on Saturday and a lot of the other communities that I, that are coming up after us. Are planning to do the entire budget, entire warrant. You know, if we can get, put that period at the end of the, the process, it's, it, I think that'd be great. I mean, obviously, weather and other things, number, number of people coming out, you know, obvious things that we need to be conscious of. So I, yeah, it's, it's a cost, it, there's, there's certainly a, a cost from, from personnel and planning and prepping and. You know, police details, fire details, getting chairs again, if we're probably going to have to do it outside again. Beth, I'll, I'll turn it over, I can probably keep talking, but I won't.
Why would we do it outside?
Beth, for you.
When I've, when I've priced it out before. For a special town meeting, when we were still here over at Proctor, it was around, you know, $4,000, under, $4,000 or under. My concern would be if we had a special town meeting. The. The length of time you have to call that meet, after the meeting is called, to actually put on the meeting is, I think, what, 45 days? I don't know where we'll be standing in all of this now that we've decided the, the people had spoken, they want their town meetings over at Masco. I don't know how difficult it is to get on Masco's. Schedule in that, in the instance of a, of a special town meeting. On a regular school year, I don't know how doable that is. Never mind this. Mess that we're in right now with COVID, I mean, I don't even, the schools don't even know when they're going to be back. So I don't even know what to think about that, even trying to get it on. If we had to do it outside, yes, there'd be chairs, there'd be audio. That's add to it.
Yeah, Beth, let me ask you a question another way. Dick, if it's the, the sense of the board, I'm more than happy to withdraw my motion and we leave it at 100. Or we can amend the motion to any number in between. The one thing I personally feel would be an unnecessary complication is trying to divide the meeting into. Quorum for this one and a quorum for that one. I think we just pick a quorum and go with it for the entire, for the entire meeting this Saturday. And I'm happy to have your thoughts on what that should be. If you really feel it needs to be 100, then, I don't know if the rest of the board feels that way. But, you know, if the sense of the board is that no, let's just stick with 100, then I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I would feel if, if we're going, if we're going to do everything, then I would say we want to go with 100. And it's fully, nobody can complain about the fact that we shortened it or something like that. The only thing somebody could complain about, and it was their choice, is that they felt, felt disenfranchised. But that's, that was their decision. But I would say that if we're going to go through everything, it should be the 100 and that's what I would agree with. And so we don't need a motion then.
Mr. Jackson. Oh, sorry, Lynn, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I, I think, you know, the, the longer we go, it gets more difficult for departments to start to plan. Whether or not they're going to get what is listed on, on the warrant. People are going to start to get into vacation mode. We don't know where COVID is going to go. It could get worse and make it more difficult for us to get all the business done that we need to. So I, I, my take would be that we make a massive push on publicizing the importance of people coming out to address the, you know, the business of the town. And do it all now and keep it at 100.
That's my sense, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jackson?
If you, you know, if, if you want to keep it on 100, so be it. But like I said, if you wind up with 85 people, you're going to look pretty silly.
Well, I think one of the things people forget, it's not a case, and I've had experience with this, it's not a case that, oh gosh, we'll have 85. Well, sorry, everybody, go home. What we've done before, the moderator in Rockport, and I was there for this, I can't remember what our quorum was, but we were short. And he basically, in that case, I, he basically asked the police to stand by the door and ask nobody to leave. And said, everybody go to the phone, there were phones in the lobby then. And he said, I got a pocketful of quarters if, and long story short, it took about 45, 50 minutes. But we got the additional 20 people who came down for the meeting. And I would strongly suggest, Mr. Moderator, unless you felt that was an uncomfortable position for you to put yourself in. That an option for you would be to say, we'd like to start this meeting, we do call your friends. I don't know what you think on that.
We actually did that in Top Sealed a few years ago.
We have, okay, good, I was happy for that.
We have.
Steve?
You're on mute, Steve. You're on mute.
Yeah, it's not unusual, we've done that before in Top Sealed.
Okay, sure.
So. I, I'm fine with that. And I, I just don't think it's going to be an issue, but if it becomes an issue, yeah. I think it won't be that, they will be looking for 25 people, we'll probably be looking for about eight or nine or something.
I agree, I agree. So while I would favor 51, and Boyd, I understand you favoring 51, my sense is, rather than deadlock this. I'd like to withdraw my motion at this time, so there is no motion on the floor to change the quorum. And then my next question is, and I'd like to go sort of around the, the table for the board. Are you okay with this? And shall we consider that the business of this meeting has been addressed and we've made a decision by not deciding to change it? Dick?
That sounds good with me.
Boyd?
Well, I think it's something that we could take advantage of and I think we're foolish if we don't.
Lynn?
I'm fine with it because I think we've already passed the 112th budget. And we would have to schedule another meeting to come back anyway to address the other needs of, of the town. So I'd rather keep it this way. And I know when I get off this call, I'm going to send out an email to probably 200 people that I know to say, regardless of how you feel about any of the issues, please come out to let your voice be heard.
Agreed.
And it's important that they can help directly in keeping this town moving forward in the middle of this pandemic. I think there's a civic service component to it. You might be able to appeal to. You, you might be able to appeal to the civic mindedness of people in this unusual circumstance.
And if we're.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I was just going to say too, if, if we're, if we're at 85 people or whatever the number is short. There's probably certain, some people in the community who are probably nervous to come out anyway for being in the crowd. If we're being able to space people out that greatly at that point, even further, those people, if you, if anybody gets, hears back from somebody, I'm nervous to come because don't want to be in a group. You might be, if we get to a situation where we have to make those phone calls, maybe just let them know if we, if we need a couple more people, you'll be spaced out significantly, we'll put you in the back corner.
Only, if you can say only a quarter of the chairs are filled, so you'll be able to find a chair that's a considerable distance away. And if we're lucky enough to have a breeze blowing, then we can say the wind is blowing too. So whatever the case. I'm content with living with this. As I say, I would make the changes you suggest, Boyd, but if there's a question of optics, I don't think there's any optics question with staying with 100. And it sounds, as we talk more and more about it, that the risk of not having a quorum of at least 100 is. Becoming increasingly smaller in our minds as we talk about this more. So. Boy, I'd like to give a chance to make a suggestion.
Well, we, we talked, we talked a little bit, we talked a little bit about how embarrassing it's going to be if we have to do this or that. Well, I can tell you, if we reduce the quorum to 10 and we had 11 and we conducted our town business with that number, we'd certainly have an optics problem.
I agree, yeah, I definitely agree. That's, that's why the, I thought Lauren's opinion on the 51 was a good one. But I'm not feeling at all uncomfortable if we keep it at 100. I wanted to put a stake in the ground and have the conversation around that. And Dick, I think you sort of steered us towards a number of.
I can assure you, I'm not going to lose any sleep over a quorum of 100.
Okay, Steve, do you have anything you want to say on the topic?
I just want, I want people to know that I had sent out an email because we had discussed adding consents, consent agendas to the meeting. I was over at the school in the field and it was between 10 and 11, I don't know exactly, but it was quite hot on the field. And my feeling is, at this point, if we have a number of people sitting on the field, we need to make sure this meeting. Goes by in a very expeditious manner and, and things move smoothly, move smoothly. And we hopefully will be, get, get done by 10 o'clock. Because I think after 10 o'clock, the heat on that field is going to build.
Yeah.
And I'll be, as moderator, I will be kind of judging that and the speed of the conversation and the discussion on certain items. Article 21 probably will, I don't know if it will have the most discussion. I'm always surprised at what article winds up taking up the most discussion and, and it's always an interesting bet. But I will propose that we handle a group of articles, like all of the ones that have to do with the fire department, the pump and the, the spending at the firehouse. That will probably, if, if need be, I'm going to group those together and ask for the people there. And if they're unanimously in agreement, then we can actually put an agenda, a consent agenda on the floor right then and there. So that may be an option because I do not want people to be starting to faint because of heat exhaustion and stuff like that. That's the last thing we want to do.
We should get our most difficult town meeting agendas ever and be sure that we hold them outside in June. See if things go faster. But, no, I think that's totally fine, Steve, while I. While I, in another world, I would say that we've picked the easy peasy consent agenda ones before. There is an additional rationale now that I do think we will find this is a shorter town meeting for many, many reasons. In part due to the slight different mix, I think, that we're going to get in, in people who come. So if you'd like to just guide us through that when we're at the meeting, explain what's happening. That's.
Absolutely.
Your call, Steve, at that point.
Yeah, it's yours anyway, so.
I understand, but I just want you guys to be aware that the reason I'm doing this is because you're sense that the heat is building on the field. And it may not be where we're sitting, but it, it may be where the residents are sitting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lynn, if you're going to, if you're going to send an email message to 200 people, you better tell them to bring their umbrellas.
And hats, yes.
A sun hat's probably not a bad idea.
I'm bringing mine.
Kevin, are we going to have water on site or should people be encouraged to bring water bottles?
So Beth has bought a tremendous amount of water for people. We have over 150 or 200 bottles. And we'll be ready with more if necessary. But we did put in the letter recommending that people bring water as well. So we'll replenish people during the course of the meeting.
Beautiful.
Yeah, we'll have a table where people can pick up the waters as they come in. But just for your knowledge, Board, I will have a cooler behind where you're sitting, like in, in front of Steve, maybe. Steve will be up on the bleachers. I'll have a cooler down below for your convenience, as we usually do at town meetings.
Yep. No, I think, great. And Beth, I want to really thank you for all the work you've been doing in trying to figure out how to make this work. And Steve, I know you've been just about as direct, I guess you have been as directly involved. The three of you, Kevin, Steve and Beth, this is a lot of work. And I think your ability to adapt on the fly in basically one week to a completely different venue in a different environment is, commendable is a weak word for it. I just really appreciate that. I'm so excited that the powers that be have shone down and are looking at us and saying, gosh, they worked awfully hard. We'll give them sun on Saturday. So. Maybe a little thick, maybe a little hot, but better hot than wet.
Can I ask a question? I'm not sure who it's directed to, but what time would you like us to get there?
Steve, what do you think? Usually they have the meeting to come to, but now they don't.
The meeting will not be. So you can get there by 8 o'clock, I think should be sufficient. Our, our representative, our attorney, I'll be there at 7:30 in the morning, making sure that things are going okay. And our attorney, representative, won't be Lauren, but it will be Carolyn, I'm not sure her last name, but she was, she'll be there around 7:30 if you'd like to introduce yourself to her. And the other thing that you should know is, and Kevin, maybe you could explain this a little bit better than I will, but there is a concern, not a concern, but it's different than in, in an enclosed area where you're right now sitting at the same table and you're close. You can nod at the attorney and ask for some information if you feel like you need a legal interpretation or something like that. But you'll probably need to kind of, what do you call it, talk to her just a little bit beforehand so that you guys are all clear. If we, if we want her to get involved, you need to figure a signal to get her involved if you feel like that that's necessary for a particular issue, okay? So it may be helpful for you to have that discussion there before the meeting starts. And that was, you probably want to get there about 8 o'clock and have that discussion. And I, I'd like to promptly start the meeting at 8:30. And hopefully we'll have the quorum at that time. We'll go right into the meeting and, and be done by 10, 10:30.
So one thing I would add, and, and this moderator, thank you, Dee, this, we're going to do, rather than being in the bleachers, we'll be down front. The bleachers being metal, we didn't want FinCom and the board to be sitting on that because they'll, they'll draw more heat than we'd want under the circumstances. So we'll have tables, like traditionally set up, but in front of the moderator, down below on the track. The moderator will be up above at the podium in the bleacher section with Beth probably for counting purposes. And one of the things with that setup will be socially distanced there. And Carolyn Murray, who's the attorney who'll be here for KP, what we talked about is actually having her at the end of the table, sort of facing inward towards us. So if there is an item, she's not facing outward towards the crowd per se. She's sort of facing towards us. So if there's something, we can kind of lean in and, you know, make that eye contact or motion as needed. We were trying to discuss baseball signals that might be appropriate, but, or kicking under the tail, but that might be throwing a shoe down the aisle. So we'll, we'll, we'll try to make it work so that she can, she'll see us. She'll just, she'll be looking down the row, not necessarily directly at the audience, but she'll have some, she'll be able to kind of spin a little bit to be able to do it. So we'll make it try to be as accommodating as possible from, from the perspective of trying to communicate physically.
We, we actually had a, a meeting yesterday and we got, we got a fair amount of input from the police chief and Gary Wilds. They're going to be there at 6 o'clock in the morning with their staff. The police will have the whole department down there, the way it sounds to me. And they will be instrumental in directing traffic and getting people to the check-in gate and the table and all that kind of stuff. It was pretty impressive. The police, the police have been very involved in this process.
Boyd, if we, if we park close to the football field on that side, or should we be parking on the other side to free up spots for the residents?
Depends. It wouldn't be a bad idea because if we park on the other side, it's a long distance. But they're going to have golf carts up there to bring people like me from that, from the long, long distance. But no, that's not a bad idea. I hadn't thought about that. But there, I think there were, what, what did he say yesterday, Beth? 113 parking places or?
That's right.
Something like that.
130, I think, on that side?
Yeah, okay, the near side.
13 handicapped.
Yeah, that's our quorum right there.
There it is, yeah. When we fill the parking lot, we can start the meeting.
One other thing before we, we adjourn here today, one other thing, and typically when we read off names of people that are coming off of boards and thanking them for their service to the town. I, I believe we discussed it yesterday that it will be, I will be asking everybody that is leaving a board or what has served on a board and is no longer going to be to stand at once. I think we're going to kind of eliminate reading off individual names and try and expedite, as I said, the process.
That'll save, that'll save some time.
And if that's in the, that's in the town report, right? Is the name in the town report?
Well, it'll be written up in the town report, I'm sure of that.
No, all I'm saying is if there, if it's going to be in this town report, then you can just say, the names are in the town report. Want to thank the people and we all stand. And I just can't wait.
You ought to call their name and give them a chance to stand up and receive.
I sort of think that calling the names is, is good. The other thing too is that if there's a Mary Smith and Joe Franklin are two women, and I hear the names, but I don't know who they are. If they stand up at the same time, I don't get the benefit of seeing that. So, you know, from my point of view, stand up and sit down or stand up and stay, but at least just stay in their seats. Oftentimes, we spend time, you know, folks walking up from a distance or something.
By the, by the way, it was pointed out at yesterday's meeting that the sun is going to be at the back of the audience. The sun is going to be in our faces.
Well, lucky them.
Well, that's, that's probably a good thing.
Yep. Beth? Beth?
You're muted.
No, I, I just, I was just trying to motion that it's going to be coming in at you from like 1 or 2 o'clock. It's not going to be directly on your face. It'll be, it'll be, you know, here and going up.
Yep.
You've probably already thought of this, but I, I think to John, your point that people in the past came up to the podium when their name was called, it would be helpful probably to explain to everybody what the process is going to be. When, we're going to thank the boards, when your name is called, please stand. And then you can sit back down again. So then people don't start to come out or they feel uncomfortable about walking.
I, I, yes, yes, I will explain that, yes.
It's, it's, it's Steve's game.
Yep. Do we have any other business having met the primary requirements? Yeah, Kevin?
Just one last item. Vice Chair, question on the parking. We've directed all the department heads to park in that back lot, so not by the football field. So just be aware of that as well. So staff will be coming from that side. And if, you know, if you come in and you, if anyone chooses, if they park there and they want to get a ride, we do have the golf carts, as was indicated before, we can make sure we, we drive you over. And last thing, I just wanted to, while we're all on the line, so we're on the same page too. I'm looking at the hourly weather for Saturday as of right now. 71 at 7, 74 at 8, 78 at 9, 80 at 10, 83 at 11. And then it peaks at 88 at 3 PM and it comes back down. So for what it's worth, and I know we're trying to keep it expedite as much as possible, we're looking 70s for the vast majority of the time.
I would venture to guess that Proctor was hotter than that on any.
I agree with you 100%. And I must say that graduation at Masco has been 112 measured in the past. So I think it's going to be nice if there's, I hope, a breeze. That will be the relief that's necessary.
Well, we were asking for nice, we were, I'm sorry, Beth, say that.
Just the hard sun, I think, is, you know, the bright sun is hard.
Yep. So, you know, bring sun hat or whatever it takes to work it out, but I appreciate.
We were hoping for nice weather and we got it.
Yes, we did.
Do you guys need a sun hat? Should I bring any extras or you have your own? It'd be quite the look with everyone with sun hats, glasses, masks.
My wife's got a couple of them. Would I look funny if I wore one of hers?
You should do it.
I think you'd look great, Boyd. Why don't you?
I was going to wear my B C hat, but then I thought there might be some terriers in the audience and I don't want to.
Anyway, it sounds like there's no more business. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Boyd. Roll call, vote. Dick?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
Most passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned and I thank you all. Even though we came to a decision that was the same as where we were when we started, the conversation to get there made it worth it.
John, do you want to talk a little bit before, as the meeting's over? John Spencer?
Do you want to talk a moment?